2013 Meeting of the Transportation Committee. I'm the Chairman, Mike Bonin. I'm here along with Mr. Bernard Parks, Councilman Bernard Parks. Mr. Krikorian is on his way and Mr. Labange and Mr. Kretz have competing committee meetings, so they may be coming in and out. We're going to start -- Mr. Parks, if it's okay with you, I was inclined to continue item number 10. And move on consent, items 1, 2, 6, 8, and 9. Okay. So we will then start with -- and we welcome Mr. Krikorian to the committee. We will start then with item number 3.
Item number 3.
Sure. On that number 10, we're continuing?
Yes.
Could we just -- I would just like to ask when it comes back, if we could get a little further explanation when the 7.7 million that was reallocated?
Yep.
What was the rationale on those accounts? As you said that they were, I guess, no longer needed, but yet we're talking about signage, signage replacement. Just some rationale.
A little more detail and rationale. Okay.
All right. So, item number 3.
Item number 3 is interim general manager from LADOT to present verbal report relative to the department's management, organization, and goals.
Thank you.
Welcome to the hot seat, man.
Well, thank you. Actually, I'm really looking forward to this. This is really an opportunity to present itself through the mayor, and the more I get into it, the more I'm glad I'm there. The men and women of this department are fantastic.
Let me just say one thing before you start, John, is for the folks here in the audience as -- or listening on council phone, as many folks know, the mayor has appointed Mr. Mukri as the interim general manager of the Department of Transportation, a vital department that all of us are keenly interested in, and he's got a huge task before him, and so we wanted to invite him before the committee to talk to the committee members about what his agenda is and what his plans are for the time that he's in the position.
And thank you, John Kirk Mukri. I never go by the term interim or acting. I am the general manager. As of December 1st, I'm the accountable officer in this department. So things that go on, both good and bad, I'll take credit or I'll take the punishment. But I've spent about the last--
We'll take the credit, but you can take the punishment.
I spent about the last four or five weeks in the department, meeting with the staff. I've met the majority of the executive staff. I'm now meeting the second-line supervisors, and I'm starting meeting with all the union representatives. I've also met with external stakeholders outside the city and in the city and former general managers of this department. I am impressed by the scope and breadth of the responsibilities of this department. I cannot think of one thing they do does not impact the lives of the citizens of LA. And so as we go forward, I think my role will be to find the synergies within the department, working with the bodies, the elected officials, working with the communities to expedite and improve transportation issues. And transportation issues are just not automobiles. There are going to be buses, there are going to be bikes, and there are going to be pedestrian issues that we're going to have to face daily to improve the lives of the men and women. So truly, I'm really excited to be here. The mayor gave me the opportunity. I want to thank the mayor. But I want to thank the men and women of the department who have not only welcomed me, but have sat down and they told me the good, the bad, and the ugly, the things that they're facing every day, those issues that we -- I will have to come to this body and help them resolve. And so I'm looking for a very good partnership with you and the council, the mayor, but more importantly, with the men and women of the department.
So what are your short-term and long-term goals?
Well, the short-term goals right now is just to meet all the employees and to meet the bargaining units, to figure out those fixes that we can make right now. I'm a little concerned with some of the things that have gone on that I think we can improve. I looked at street striping. We should not have a backlog of street striping. So I'll be working with the unions, I'm going to be working with our consultants, I'm going to be working with those people we have under contract to come up with a plan to fix that. I want to eliminate the backlog by the end of January. I think it's doable. I want to look at the ATSAQ system. I understand that we're under capacity where we are now and that we need to move, but in the meantime, I want to make sure that we have the dedicated resources to those men and women. I've looked at our engineering staff across the board, and I think there's room that we can do some consolidation, we can do some training, we can do some cross-pollinization. But this is all coming from our staff. These are people coming to me saying, hey, we want to do the job. Give us the environment, give us the opportunity, and we will perform. So that my role over there, as I've always told everybody, I'm not at the top of any organization, I'm at the bottom. My role is at the pointy end of the bottom, is to balance the needs of the men and women in the department to make their lives easier so they can effectively do their jobs.
So you've talked about your sort of inward-facing communications with the members of the department, all the folks who get the stuff done for our constituents. What's your plan to engage outwardly with the constituents and hear what they're feeling about the level of transportation management that the city provides?
Well, I, you know, I'm a firm believer that we hire good people. And so when I've talked to all my executive staff, I've told them, they need to be making the decisions, they need to go out there, they need to engage the council office, the community groups, they need to go to the -- every meeting that they possibly can to engage them. It doesn't help that I know more than they do. And so they need to go out there and they need to make those decisions. I've empowered them already. You have the -- you can make every yes decision now. No decision, if it comes to a no decision, for whatever reason, I need to know about it. So we can effectively find another means to come to the end. We need to focus with the end in mind. And the end in mind is to make our lives easier in the community. So how am I going to do the outward? I want my managers to engage the communities, to be with them along every step of the way. And I know you're going to get a presentation about some streetscapes and other issues that I think is going to be groundbreaking for the city.
Over the past few years, the department has begun to go through a culture change, as has the city, as has transportation thinking in the county. And there's a new energy. The mayor articulates it very well. It's an agenda I'm on board with. It's the idea that streets aren't just for automobiles, that it also needs to be safe places for cyclists and pedestrians, that we need to be promoting mass transit, and that streets need to be sort of a complete and integrated part of the community. People in the transit communities, the various different segments of the transit communities have been very excited about the direction the city has started moving in the past few years. What can you say to assure them that that momentum isn't going to slow down now?
Well, I think transportation is the key to Los Angeles in every form. And as I started my preamble, I think everything from pedestrians to bikes to buses to these light rail to subways play a key role. If we're going to get rid of gridlock, we've got to get rid of the cars on the streets. I hate to tell you. So when I visit any of the cities in the world, I see it's a healthy mix of everything. It's to move people and to get them in the communities where they live to live and work and play. And I think what's gone on in the city of LA in the last two or three years, being a citizen of LA is remarkable. Right now, I can walk a mile and get on the subway, and I can be in downtown in 20 minutes. You know, if I take my car, it's a crapshoot. Some days I can get here in half hour, and other days can be an hour and a half. So it's a cultural change, not only -- it's not just a physical change that we're going to have to look at. We're going to have to re-educate all of us on how to move around the city and move around the city safely. And so I think you hit the nail on the head with the question. It's a healthy mix of every aspect of movement.
Have you had a chance to meet yet with the bicycle and the pedestrian coordinators?
They're on my next -- they're on my next level of meetings, although in the Department of Recreation and Parks, I did have a healthy conversation with the bicyclists and the coalition.
Yeah, I'm sure you did. Let me just, before I turn it over to my colleagues, let me just do a little bit of a lightning round, and I probably should have told your staff, I was going to ask this. Since you have taken over, I guess you officially took over this week, right?
December 1st.
December 1st. Since your appointment, have you had an opportunity to bicycle on one of our bike lanes or sharrows?
I do bike, but it's mostly in the valley and along the river, so I haven't been in the city yet.
Okay. I'd encourage you to try it so that cyclists, so you can appreciate some of the challenges that cyclists are facing, that we all have a responsibility to help work through. Have you had an opportunity to use the dash shuttle system yet?
I've used the dash shuttle system since I came to the city in '95, so I'm well aware of it.
Subway? Subway? You said you used the subway?
Yes, I use the subway. I've used buses. You know, I even had to use taxis to LAX, so I've used just about every mode of transportation that you can have in the city.
Did you use a taxi or a ride share?
Taxi. Taxi.
You don't have to answer that. You don't have to answer. You can take the theft on that one. Mr. Parks?
Dan, what is this, your third department?
It's my third department as department head, yes.
And what was, I don't know, you were in Wreckin' Park, what was the previous?
General Services from Ranald Bacon, Wreckin' Parks, and now Department of Transportation.
And then with those assignments, you're kind of like at the hub of the support operations for the city. Where do you see the improvements? I know people talking technology and a lot of other stuff, but where do you see that we can make our most improved impact?
Well, I think, I hate to tell you, technology is going to play a major role in our lives going forward. Everybody has a smartphone, we rely on it. As it pertains to transportation issues, every mode of transportation should be at your fingertips, including zip cars. You have to look, we have to look 20 years in the future on what people are going to want. I've done some research and I've looked at the generation, they call it the millennium generation. When I grew up at 15 and a half, you got a learner's permit at 16, you had a driver's license. This new group of people, they don't care if they have a car, 25, 26, it's not uncommon that they've never owned a car in their life. How do they get around? What should we be planning for? And so when we look at transportation issues, it's going to be, it's going to be a healthy mix, and I'm not, you know, I was born, I wasn't born in Detroit, my parents were born in Detroit, but the internal combustion engine in a single car may be the least efficient form of movement going forward. So I think it's going to have to be a healthy mix of everything. But we're going to have to rely on technology. I think that this department proved that with the advent of the ATSAQ system in synchronizing their lighting, moving people around. But as we go to the, if we go to the out-years, I think we need to do both a six-month plan and a 20-year plan. I think we're going to see a radical change across the board. I think what we've done on light rail and subways and buses is tremendous. We've just got to change the culture.
One thing, as when we hear a lot of terms, fans that are in it, the communities and such, but one of the things that I don't know if we've done very well is find a way to get transportation, housing, and commercial in the same space at the same time. How do you see that can transform the city and what role does LADOT play?
Well, I think we need to look at what people want now and in the future. And if I read the LA Times correct, where it was important when I grew up that you have a single-family home with a big yard, they're looking at condos, they're looking at living in and around the areas where they work and where they recreate. So I really believe the, I think that work, play, live is going to take care of itself. I think that people are moving downtown, are moving to the Westwood Village areas where it's multi Warner Center. If you look at where people are buying and living, I think it's, I think we need to come up with a transportation plan where we're moving people from point A to point B and then that one-mile radius after they get off that mass transit. But I really believe that the, that we're, the transportation hubs and the community hubs are taking care of themselves right now. We've got to open our eyes to it.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you. I don't have too much to ask because it's been a pleasure working with you as general manager of Wreckin' Parks. And one of the things that I always most appreciated and respected as we went through the budget process was that you have always been a fair but nonetheless fierce advocate for your department. And you've already always made a very strong case for your department. I would expect that that would continue in this role here. So in Wreckin' Parks, we'd gone through horrendous cuts over the last few years, and yet the men and women of that department continued to work very, very hard to make sure that things continued to function well. And I complimented you on that, I think, every single time we opened a new park or did anything else. So now in this new position, you're walking into a situation where, I'm just going to be as blunt and candid as I can, there have been severe morale challenges in this department from the rank-and-file level right on up to the executive level. And this is a department, too, that has strained under the impact of severe budget cuts. And it is very much a public safety department, but it doesn't necessarily always get treated with the same respect and commitment from policymakers as other public safety departments. So given all of that, what's your, and I think you touched upon it already, and I appreciate the fact that you spoke already so eloquently about the work that's being done by the people of the department, but what are, what's your big-picture plan for addressing that morale challenge? And what would you see as an indicator of success in addressing that in the shorter, intermediate term?
Wow, thank you. That's a tough question. I could be wearing any general manager hat with that question today in this budget.
That's true.
With the Department of Transportation, I have to be honest with you, the managers have been very blunt with me, and they've given me a blueprint of what they see or the areas that need to be improved. Morale is contingent on basically how I set the environment for the department. My philosophy has always been family first for any employee, and so I want to carry that. The other thing is, as I deal with departments and functions and jobs, we have to be fair with them. We cannot put people in acting positions and keep them there for years and years and years. We cannot put them there in positions, they're not getting paid. We cannot backfill positions to give that continuity effort. So as I get involved in this, I will be a fierce advocate. I will want to look at those areas where we need to promote employees permanently, give them that civil service protection that they deserve. I also will want to bring in the least-cost, most productive employees, which are your new employees, so that we have a continuity there. And allow the employees to make their decisions, help craft the department, and help me make those decisions on organization, technology issues. This department has two tiers, it looks like. It's one is the special fund side and one is the general fund side. And it looks like special funds side is pretty well-funded, but the general fund side is suffering. So when I look at the men and women, I'm not going to look at where their funds are going to come from, I'm going to look at what's best for them and making their job. I'm looking at the traffic officers, I'm looking at crossing guards. I have 60 vacancies in crossing guards, and you don't think about it, but that's a key role. Every morning, our kids want to go to school, they want to be safe. I'll be working with the union leadership. You know, good, bad, and different, we all work together the same goal, and that's to serve the city of LA and the citizens. So I'll be asking them for their opinion. But when it comes to the budget, yes, I would like to see more of the revenues that are generated in this department, to stay with this department, as I told you. I don't know why I have a backlog in striping. If I have a contractor ready and willing and have the money, I should be working with the union leadership and say, look, we need to catch up, I should be working with my employees, it's not jeopardizing your future, but it may jeopardize the citizens of LA. And I'm looking across the board on everything we do. I'm looking at the cameras on the light poles that LAPD wants to work with. It doesn't make sense to me that 27% of my cameras now are out of service. If I can get a contractor in there and we can get it fixed and we can do these feeds into LAPD, the city's going to be a safer city. So I've been doing a lot, I've been spending Saturdays, Sundays, and every night working to understand this department, and when all comes down, I think morale will take care of itself when people feel appreciated, when they have a say in what goes on, and when they're rewarded for their efforts that they've done. You know, since 2007, eight, every city employee has had to, you know, suck it up and do more. I said, now we should take that time to figure out, the economy's getting a little better, we've been through the tough times, now we should take more of a strategic view on what we're going to look like going forward. Tactically, we had to take the cuts. Tactically, we could not hire. I get all that. But it only works so long, and the morale issue at this department is going to be number one with me because I think, once we do that, I think you're going to see this thing be the gold standard this department was when I came in 1995.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Kretz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like a lot of what I've just heard. I missed part of the discussion, especially pleased to hear what you said about striping because I think that's been a real safety problem throughout the city. What about some of the things that have been cut in recent years? Certainly, people in my district are clamoring for like reinstatement of some of the staffing for permit parking districts and ability to deal with that, ability to deal with traffic mitigations that have been paid for essentially by developers, but the department isn't able to follow through and do them.
I can't answer all your questions, but I do know that we've cut a lot of our staff in the field that are the initial point of contact to the community and the customers and the council office. I need to look at that because I feel the majority of our problems are caused by lack of communication. You can never have too much communication. And so as I was telling this committee and what I told my office, they should have the ability to say yes from the very get-go. We shouldn't have to wait or study to death. If they know the answer's going to be yes, let's say yes and let's move on. Let's make it easy. As it pertains to some of the things we've cut, give me some time, I'll be happy to come back. I'm doing that right now, I'm working with the managers on that, working with the existing staff. I have had numerous communications with the mayor's office. I get it. Transportation is a key issue for LA. And as I tried to tell this committee, I don't go by the term interim or acting or part-time or temporary. I am the general manager now, and I'll take everything serious, and I'll come up with a plan to make our lives easier and better.
Well, thank you for that answer. As you consider some of these things, I'd also consider some of the neighborhood traffic folks that were cut restoring that as well. It's certainly been painful not to have them, especially in the area around the 405 where we had so much cut through traffic and so many problems and not as much staffing to deal with those types of problems.
I appreciate your constant emphasis on encouraging people to get to yes. I think that's extremely important. You know, I started working for the city almost 20 years ago in a councilwoman's field office. I used to joke that DOT was N-O-T because we got no as an answer so often. And that's been changing a lot, and I'm glad to see it, and I hope you continue to encourage it. I think you put the nail on the head a bit, though, is sometimes folks can't get to a yes, no, or even a maybe because they're just so swamped with stuff coming in. My folks in West LA, Rudy and those guys, are just inundated. There is so much to do and there's just not enough resources there, so I hope we get back to a point where we can do that. I want to ask you one last question. There are two ways in the city of Los Angeles that I think a lot of people primarily feel or singularly feel the hand of city government. One of them is when they get their DWP bill, and the other is when they get a parking ticket or when they're at a parking meter. And a lot of people in the city of Los Angeles feel that our approach towards parking is punitive, it's let's find any way we can to squeeze some nickels out of people to balance our budget. That isn't on you because council sets the rates, but what can you do as general manager to look at and evaluate some of the ideas that are out there to try to make us friendlier to our residents who are parking?
Well, having been a recipient of parking tickets more than once and having paid the fine, I'm very sensitive to that issue. But I'm also sensitive to the issue that there are parking meters and they have to be enforced. The 500-plus men and women that are working that are not the enemy. They're out there every day doing the best they can, and they're doing more than writing tickets out there. They're helping direct traffic. When we had that incident at LAX, they were called upon to help to go down there and help the traffic management. And so how can we make it easier? I think better signage, better understanding, use technology when there's going to be special enforcement in areas. One of the things I thought about during the president's visit was, you know, we always talk about this reverse phone calling when there's an emergency. Can we use that sort of technology to call the residents that are on a specific street and leave a message and say, hey, you know, this 24-hour period, there's no parking? It should be punitive, but then again, if you do make a violation, you know, it's not a foul on us, it's something we have to enforce. I don't know how you make it kinder, gentler, but if you can give more information out, make the signage better, make sure the parking meters are working properly, I, there's no way around it, there's going to be tickets and people are going to be unhappy, but we should make it easier for the person parking that they know what the boundaries are. If it's two hours, a four hour, if it's no parking temporarily, we need to probably do a better job there. I have met with our parking enforcement, the management. My next step is to go out and roll calls with the actual traffic officers on the field, get their feedback, make sure they know that they're important and that they're loved and that they have a critical and responsible job to do, and perhaps make sure that they're doing the best customer service they can when they're out in the field and they do get that complaint.
I just want to thank you and welcome you to the new job. It's rare to have someone in the city family who can be such a utility player, who can manage a department and go to another department and manage that one and bring a managerial skill set to whatever the subject matter. And I think we're very lucky to have you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Did you say, did your, on the microphone, did you say yes? Mr. Parks, the microphone.
Oh, wow. Getting people to say yes. Hopefully, in this coming budget year, you'll be able to get the CAO and the Budget Committee to say yes in leaving special parking revenue funds more into LADOT so you can use them for their intended purpose as opposed to funding police, fire, and everything else. So maybe you can start working on that presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Item number four?
Item number four is a DOT report relative to the People Street program and related policies, standards, and guidelines for the implementation of plazas, parklets, and bike corrals.
You got a, you should, let me, please, first of all, identify yourselves for the record. You've got a few folks coming up.
Okay. Good afternoon, council members. I'm Dan Mitchell, Assistant General Manager with the Department of Transportation. We're very excited today to introduce to you a new citywide program called People Street. It builds off our successful pilot projects for implementing bike corrals and parklets and the Sunset Triangle Plaza. And it represents a grassroots approach where we're inviting the community to propose projects in their neighborhood and partner with the city to implement them. So we're providing the tools and the framework for a successful program and then facilitating the community building out these projects in their neighborhood to enhance one of their greatest assets, and that's our streets. With the support of the city council and the mayor for this program, LADOT would like to open up an application cycle, allowing the community to propose these projects. Then we would review them according to criteria that we've identified in the report, and then come back to you with a list of these projects and the funding necessary to implement them for your approval. And with that, I would like to turn this over to Valerie Watson, our Assistant Pedestrian Coordinator, to tell you more about the program.
Thanks so much, Dan. Again, I'm Valerie Watson, Assistant Pedestrian Coordinator with LADOT, together with Margot O'Connaughy, here in the red sweater. We are the city's first-ever pedestrian coordinator team, and so we're very pleased to be here today. Appreciate being able to follow our new GMs. Appreciate being able to follow our new GM's comments on some innovative work we've been So, we offer you today a quick overview of People's Street, the new citywide program administered by LADOT for installing three types of projects: plazas, parklets, and bike corrals. These temporary, as in not permanently constructed, project types have one thing in common: they are installed below the curb. Plazas are installed in underutilized or redundant road space. Parklets and bike corrals are installed in on-street parking spaces, and they all transform roadbed into people space. People's Street is a program based in partnerships with a community partner. Costs and responsibilities are shared between these partners and the city. People's Street is a bottom-up program. Communities who know their neighborhoods best propose project locations and are responsible for long-term maintenance and management. Interested community partners first identify and propose a project type for a specific location, build a coalition of support, and then submit their application online via the People's Street website. The website provides a full array of information, materials, and contact forms to support and guide community partner applications through a clear and consistent application to installation process. This one-stop-shop website or public interface offers community partners a streamlined process for getting projects on the ground quickly without the red tape we all know and don't love. People's Street projects are quick, cost-efficient transformations that demonstrate the benefits of expanded pedestrian space. A pre-approved required kit of parts of design elements for each project type, such as planners, movable furniture, surface treatments, and parklet design details, hasten installation. No one has to reinvent the wheel on a project-by-project basis. Ultimately, these projects are a tool for catalyzing larger, more capital-intensive public realm improvements, a Phase 1 step that allows communities to immediately experience the benefits of repurposing road space into more active, accessible spaces for people to enjoy. A distinguishing feature of the People's Street program is its focus on conducting pre- and post-installation evaluation on these projects to study their physical, social, and economic impacts on neighborhoods and mobility. Per previous council direction, the city of LA has worked with an array of city departments and community-based organizations to pilot the three project types. As a result, the city has facilitated the installation of one pilot plaza. This is Sunset Triangle Plaza in Silverlake. Four pilot parklets, York Boulevard and Highland Park, Spring Street in downtown LA, Huntington Drive in El Cerrano. And three bike corrals. Here's a couple, York Boulevard and Highland Park near the parklet and a new one just installed recently in Glendale Boulevard in Atwater Village. So, the People's Street website soft-launched in October of this year and the full array of supporting program materials will be released in early January. An introductory inaugural application window will open in March and close in April. After application review and prioritization, LADOT will report back to council in June on the selected projects. Going forward, the regular yearly application window will open each October. So, this is a quick look at our website, which is live. It offers all the information that I've just outlined and will house the online application So, thanks again for your consideration. At this time, we would like to direct you to the two recommendations in our council report and happy to take your questions.
Thank you. So far, there has been one plaza, four parklets, and three corrals. The plaza is in CD 13 and the parklets and the corrals, those of CD 14 and CD 1?
Parklets in CD 14, one corral in CD 14 on York, one corral as part of Sunset Triangle Plaza in CD 13, and then the last corral just went in in CD 13.
Okay. I've actually used a couple of the parklets downtown on Spring Street. I didn't know they were there and I was walking down one day and all of a sudden I saw them and I thought, this is really cool. And I'm very eager to get some in my district. I noticed that in your report, you outlined the successes of each and what you labeled the potential issues of each of them. How did you evaluate and with whom did you consult to find out what's working well and what might need some improvement?
Sure. So, we've been integrally involved in the process of formalizing this program even before Margot and I joined the department. She was very much a center of the Sunset Triangle Plaza project and I actually was the project lead on the Spring Street parklets. So, we've been really connected with the community of organizations, volunteers, pro bono designers, and the elected officials that really pushed the pilot program through. As part of the formalization of the program, we were able to have a couple of independent architects look at the pilot parklets from a constructibility standpoint, and that's some of the lessons learned that you mentioned are in the council report. So, we wanted to understand ease of construction, structural integrity, access to drainage, things like that, to inform the development of our kit of parts, which is going to be that pre-approved set of design details that folks don't have to reinvent every time they want to do a project.
So, when you were doing the review, though, I wanted to get a little bit more granular and I'll be just clear about what I'm looking for is, did you get feedback directly from council districts 13 and 14 about what they were hearing from the community?
Yes, and through their staff liaisons, we're able to really glean from the folks who were responsible for all the different projects, you know, some of the challenges they faced, maybe some of the things they might do differently, some of the design details that were working or not working.
Right. So, in the streamlined process you're proposing, I guess there's two ways I can go with this. One is, I can understand that you might want to have an annual process for something as big as a plaza, even for something as significant as a parklet. You'll be removing some parking and it's a question of what do you put in and all that, and those are somewhat expensive. Bike corrals seem like they'd be easier and probably significantly less expensive. Why would the bike corral program need to go through the same rigorous annual process?
There's a benefit to all of these projects being unified under one umbrella, mainly for the benefit of the public so that they don't have to track down who to talk to when they want to do projects like this. So, that's one upside to it being under the umbrella of People's Street. Another, with an application cycle that opens every year at the same time, people can marshal their resources and anticipate that there's a season for these projects to be ready to apply and be strong applicants. They're also based on that one-year cycle for the memorandum of understanding that you enter in with the community. But agreed, the three project types are very different. Some of them, you know, like the bike corrals are a standard prefabricated design piece. And so, a lot of the lead time or the kind of the time to get ready for applications on the part of the community organizations and partners would be to marshal support for their project and generate that public input, have the support of their council office and all that. You know, we would want them to have time to get their ducks in a row.
Why only four projects in a year?
So, you're referring to the plazas in the council report?
Yeah. Okay. So, the plaza, there was only four plazas. How many parklets could you have in a year?
Well, it's dependent on several factors. One is the amount of interest that is generated through the application process because this is bottom-up communities are proposing locations. Second, as we go through our yearly budget cycles and processes internally at the city, you know, we then arrive at the amount of funds that are available to support the projects.
Correct. So, we could have a maximum with the city contribution, a maximum of four plazas. How many parklets would we be able to award in a year?
Do you want to speak to that? It might not be that we can put a number at the moment just because those factors are so variable, cycle to cycle. I think, you know, we would want to facilitate as many projects as we can.
Yeah. I would just add that the different projects have different costs and different resources that need to go into those. So, coming up with an exact number of each type is difficult. We would put together all of the applications and evaluate them. Also, being on a cycle, it allows us to prioritize the projects. So, when you were talking about maybe a continuous process for bicycle corrals, if we have an application window, it allows us to prioritize installing those that are most needed and best supported.
And so, who would issue the permit? It would be an A permit, right?
Well, that's, again, differences between project types, but an A permit would be required for parklets to help facilitate inspection by our Bureau of Contract Administration. And that's already a city mechanism that we can leverage. The plazas and the bike corrals will not require an A permit. And so, essentially, these projects are allowed in the public right-of-way through an MOU between LADOT and then the community partner.
And is street services ever consulted or brought into the loop on the use of public right-of-way?
They've been an integral team member in the formalization and the development of the process. And so, I think in the process that we have laid out, they don't quite interface at any point unless they would like to provide input. I think it's really more under the purview of LADOT with a little bit of support from the Bureau of Engineering on leveraging those existing permits where needed.
Yeah. There are things I'm anticipating where there could be a proposal and, you know, Public Works may have a concern with it because it could be installation of stuff that could wind up blocking a storm drain. There could be a revocable permit in the works to allow sidewalk dining somewhere and then you'd be putting something right next to it and the two uses might not be compatible. How do we catch that stuff?
That's a great point. We've been really fortunate to be able to work really closely with our colleagues in Public Works on, you know, anticipating some of those needs. One would be that we have a lot of access to the public way reservation system information, PWRS, and other means to ensure that projects aren't going to be approved in locations where there might be future, you know, street work that would, you know, it would be kind of silly to put in a project if it's going to have to be ripped out. So, we have good lines of communication and collaboration with them on being able to identify those types of things, but also, I think the site-location criteria that we have worked on with staff of all departments to date is they are specifically written to alleviate those types of conflicts with things like drainage, the adequate placement of these projects to ensure design safety and other drainage considerations. So, we've been able to go through a process already to, you know, create those criteria for the program to follow.
What about utility holds? A lot of times, I'll want to have a street resurfaced in my district and then the rare occasion when I have some money to do it, the all-too-rare occasion. Often, the street will be on a utility hold because DWP might be doing work scheduled a year out, so we don't resurface until they're done. Is there a way you catch that?
In terms of not interfering with the trenching or the utility?
Yeah. Or putting something in that will get ripped up a year later because DWP is going to be working on the street?
Yeah. I think that that certainly, you know, will be part of our internal process at DOT to, as we are, as Dan mentioned, we will be, you know, analyzing the applications that come in and prioritizing them based on criteria that are established. And that will be one of the internal looks we will do is to ensure that it doesn't conflict with future street work.
I have more questions, but I want to give my colleagues an opportunity. They may ask some of them, too. Okay. Well, I'll ask a couple more then. How do you define a community partner? Does it have to have a certain financial? Is it an organization? Is it a person? Does it have to have any financial viability?
There are a range of entities that we think would make great community partners, entities like business improvement districts, chambers of commerce. Those types of organizations already have, you know, that capacity in their wheelhouse to do the things that are required of our community partners. Organizations like community-based organizations and nonprofits may also be really good partners because they're able to marshal resources needed. Business owners, property owners, you know, there's kind of an array of entities that would make for strong applicants and project stewards. And so, we're open to, you know, anyone who can prove through the application process the required documentation that they have the capacity to hold up those responsibilities.
And what do we do if the community partner is a business and they go out of business or they reneg on their commitments? What do we do to either keep the park going or undo it?
The MOU is something that, because it's on that one-year renewal cycle, can be transferred to another party. So, that allows that flexibility if there's things change, circumstances change. You know, the city reserves a right at any time to remove a project if there's something that comes up that wasn't, you know, foreseen. So, I think we've built in those safeguards to the structure of this program so that in the event there's an emergency or other needs, we can always explore either removal or relocation.
And then, there's a question about some of this that's unique to me and Mr. Buscaino because parts of our district fall within the coastal zone. And some of this stuff might require a coastal development permit. I understand you've had some conversations with San Francisco about, and their coastal unit up there, it's very different than ours. Ours is very strict and we also don't have a certified local coastal program here, so coastal has more jurisdiction here than elsewhere. I'd encourage you to talk first with BOE. Here, coastal development permits are issued first by the city and then by coastal. This'll be a little bit more difficult, I think, in parts of my district, but let's work together and do some hand-holding on this.
Thank you.
Colleagues? No comments? All right. Then, I'm going to recommend we move this forward to council.
Approval.
All in favor?
All.
Approved.
Thank you.
Next item. Congratulations, by the way. And thank you for helping to liberate our streets.
That brings us to item number five, which is a DOT report relative to inferior workmanship and poor quality associated with the installation of continental crosswalks and bike lanes pursuant to an Englander Sideo motion.
Good afternoon, council members.
Good afternoon.
I'm Nader Asmar, the Acting Executive Officer of Operations, back to talk to you again since the last time we met. So, this is the third report on the issue of scarring, poor workmanship on continental crosswalks and bike lanes. We addressed some of the scarring issues before.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, you asked for some additional information on how we're doing on our striping as far as metrics, how long it's taking us to do striping, and some additional strategies to address the striping around schools, striping in neighborhoods and such.
Yeah. I think, to be clear, to put a bit of a finer point on it, I think the members of the council were, to a person, pretty horrified about the lack of coordination between street services and DOT in regards to how long it takes to re-stripe a street after it has been resurfaced or slurry sealed. And one of the things we wanted to see is how we can approve that, improve that, and what metrics we could be using to evaluate that improvement as we go along.
Right. So, I think the metric, the appropriate metric is after street services completes the paving or the slurry seal, how many days is it before we see striping on that street, whether it be the markout, which is kind of like the rough outline, or all the elements of the final striping. I took a look at what we've done since January of this year for the major streets. I put together a table. I looked at the dates and I did an average of what we've done. What I found in the average for this year was that it took us about 14 days to get out there with the markout after the paving was completed and about five additional days to complete all the elements of the striping. There were some that were longer and some were much shorter, so it sort of fluctuates, but that's the average that we found on the major streets for the ones that we had data.
What do you define as a major street?
I think of it as major highways, secondary highways, like, you know, Ventura Boulevard.
So, that wouldn't include areas with a lot of schools? A lot of schools, elementary schools, middle schools are in more residential areas?
Right. This is not for the, yeah, this is not for the residential streets, the school streets usually. It's the major streets.
Granted, I generally don't hear when it happens as it should. I usually only hear from constituents when it doesn't. 14 days sounds quicker than what I'm hearing, but...
Right. And I've heard of cases where it's gone longer, obviously.
I got an example of eight months that I can mention.
Oh, really? And I know in the past, before, a couple of years ago, we had a goal of doing...
Bury Men at Culver Boulevard in Delray, just for the record, was eight months. Berryman at Culver Boulevard in Delverage, just for the record, was eight months. Slurry sealed on March 4th and restriped just last month.
Okay. And that sort of brings me to the slurry seal issue with the local streets that, you know, we recognize that we have a problem there, and I don't think it's an issue of proper coordination as much as it could be an issue of staffing within DOT, some staffing challenges that we have. I wasn't able to find a good, you know, good metrics for local streets. There is no database that has everything in it that I want. I'm trying to piece together what we have. One of the things I could tell you is that we started a student-professional worker program about a year ago, and that's helped us to catch up a lot on our backlog as far as the work order writing. One of the things we have to do when the slurry seal goes in is we used to send staff out there to do the field investigation, determine what needs to go back in. Sometimes it varies from what was there before. We would write work orders, and that would go to our field crews to put that in. We sort of lost some of the staffing there, and we recovered a lot in the last year with the student-professional workers, but we do have a backlog that Mr. McCree was referring to that goes back 18 months or so. There was a period of time when we didn't, we weren't keeping up with what BSS was doing, and they also increased the number of miles it dated. So we have this with backlog that we're trying to address right now, and I've been meeting with our new general manager about it to talk about strategies to get that done right away. He's very interested in getting it done in January, by January, so we're looking at that right now to see how much do we have, how much--
It sounded more like a commitment than an interest.
Yeah, and we have, we share the same interest in commitment, but it's a lot of work. There is a lot of work there, but we do have a contractor, Stern Dahl, that is our partner that can help us to catch up if necessary. So I've been on this assignment, this acting assignment, for about four months. I see a lot of places where we can do improvements. I have a lot of ideas. One of the things that we intend to do is to get everything onto the new platform, My L.A. DOT, which is a map-based system. Everything is geocoded. We would like to have BSS as a partner, and that way we could easily see where the schools are, where the striping deficiencies are, what streets are still black. I'm trying to get away from writing work orders, which is a paper-based system. It's an old system. I'd like to go to more of a electronic system using tablets. These are all, you know, the vision that we have. We want to expand My L.A. DOT to include resurfacing and slurry so that we can more quickly address the needs of the communities around the schools. We're currently using an interim measure, which is a Google Doc to better track the metrics, so right now we have dates going in for all the streets, all the major streets, all the local streets, so we can see how we're doing. I can give better metrics in the future, but I didn't have a good number to give you today.
Do, so it sounds like we did not have previously. Let me ask if we now have going forward a document that will, going forward, list every street that is resurfaced or slurried, column A. Column B, the date that street services did it. Column C, the date that DOT was notified about it, and I lost track of my alphabet. The next column, the date that DOT did the restriping or started and finished. Do we now have that?
We now have that for the slurry seal. I just started that in October, and we do have that for the major streets as well.
And it includes all those columns that I indicated?
Yeah, it actually includes a lot of other information.
That's good.
It has that information in it, yes.
So over the next 60 days, we will be able to look at all of those streets that have been done, say, between December 1 and February 1, and we will be able to have a firm and clear metric of what the average length of time is between the resurfacing and the response?
Yes, we would have that. We would have some numbers to show you at that point, for sure.
Okay. Mr. Parks? All right, so what I would like for the first meeting of this committee in February is two things. A report on what those metrics are. If you can go back to November 1, that's cool, but if it's from December 1 through February 1, that's cool. And the second thing is a report on what date you successfully met Mr. McCree's commitment to have the backlog eliminated by the end of January.
Certainly.
So that would be the first meeting in February.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to receive and file the report and the motion that are before you? Or you want to just continue?
Well, I think we should continue it for February 1, the first meeting in February. All right, thank you. Item number seven.
Item number seven is a Labange Martinez motion instructing DOT to report relative to the feasibility of establishing a parking administrator position with existing resources that would oversee all parking-related functions performed by the department.
Let me just check with the clerk before you start. Do we know if Mr. Labange is going to come for this item? Because I'd be happy to take public comment and then continue it if that is his preference because I'd like him to be here for it, but in the meantime, we have two speaker cards, so let me take those first. Jay Bieber and Stephen Vincent.
I'll take the company card.
I don't blame you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jay Bieber. Nice to meet the chair. I know the other two members of the committee that are here, so nice to see them as well. Stephen Vincent and I are the people who are putting forth something that's called the L.A. Parking Freedom Initiative, and I know that you have heard about that, and it was in the Daily News last weekend, or the weekend before. And when we saw this on the agenda, we wanted to come down and just say hello and meet you and say, if this is a position that is going to be filled, we would encourage that whoever is in that position be somebody who looks at parking as a service to the city as opposed to, say, a bureaucrat who's looking to maximize revenue. And I thank you for your questions to the general manager on this issue because this is a very important issue, and we'll reserve judgment on some of his comments at this point and give him time to kind of look more into the issue. But some of the things that we're hearing from the community are that there's a number of problems out there regarding parking, and we have, certainly have some ideas, and we have some ideas from the community, and so we are looking forward to working with both this committee and the city council in general, and also the different departments and the mayor's office as well in terms of putting forth some ideas that hopefully we can get implemented rather quickly and improve things for the city and for the people of the city. And that's sort of just the general comments that we have about this, and since there's nothing specific to comment on this particular issue at this point, I'll just leave it at that, and I want to thank you. Mr. Vincent stepped out, so he won't be here.
Where'd you park today?
Downstairs. Your office, so thank you very much--
It's my big shame you didn't get a ticket while you were here. That wouldn't have been good. Any words from Mr. Labange if he wants us to continue without him, or? All right, let's, staff, come on up.
Good afternoon, council members. Robert Underlund, Department of Transportation, the executive officer in administration. We, just to brief background, we, the department many years ago did have a parking administrator position, and then as part of the KH consulting report, there was a recommendation to divide the department into six different areas, and one of them was to separate the parking enforcement component outside of that and report directly to the general manager, and then to keep certain functions within the former position of a parking administrator whole, and then to keep the parking citation processing and adjudication separate from that as well. So there's, all the services still continue, however, in a different format than previously.
Okay. And the motion that Mr. Labange has just asked that we move forward--
And now with the new general manager, we can go back and discuss and see what his ideas or recommendations would be relative to either continuing the same format or looking at this as a possibility of doing this differently.
Right, and as much as this motion just asks DOT to prepare the report, you now have new management to work with in doing so, so I would ask that the department take a look at some of the proposals that Mr. Bieber has come up with, and some of them I may agree with, some I may not, but I think the department would do well to sort of take a look at them. Colleagues, any questions? All right, then we'll move this forward to council.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So approval on that, or--
Approval, yes. And no general public comment cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, nothing further? Colleagues, any comments or anything? Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.